All right. Welcome back to our special city commission meeting for our city manager selection. We have interviewed all four of the candidates. And now is our opportunity to deliberate and come to a final selection. So I'll turn it over to Doug to kind of walk us through his recommendations for how we proceed from here.
Great, thank you Mayor. And first and foremost, hats off to all of you. I know this has been a long process to get to the finish line. You can see it now at the end of the runway, so to speak. What I wanted to do is just at a high level indicate the process you've gone through is to really put the candidates to a variety of different settings. You've seen their written standpoints, you've seen their PowerPoint opportunities, you've had an opportunity to engage with them on a one-on-one basis, you've had a chance for them to engage with your senior staff and get some feedback on that. And then last night, you had a chance to see how they react and intermingle with your community to kind of get a sense if they fit. They're checking you and they're checking each other out in the process. And then today, obviously, is the culmination of that with a formal interview process as a public body. And so hopefully, what we've done is that you will see candidates in a variety of different settings. And I will tell you from somebody that does this on a regular basis now, candidates sometimes do really well in some parts and do poorly on other parts and then, you know, hit it out of the park in a different part. So it's really a sense of, we realize it's a gauntlet that we run them through, but we think it's appropriate because this is an important decision you have to make. And so what we're trying to do is get as many of those touch points as possible there. So, and you know, as this process is unfolding, I've talked to all of you about the breadth of material you've received. I apologize in advance, but we also know, just as a couple of your candidates say, some of you want all the details, some of you just want the high-level stuff, so we tend to give it to you all and try to allow you to sort out what you think is important or otherwise. But I wanted to start there because you've now had a bunch of material and a lot of reports and references and DISC assessments and everything else. I wanted to first ask you, is there anything that we have provided you or anything that is still a question to you as you've started to work your way through those documents or those processes that I can help you unpack at this point before we get into deliberations about which candidate or candidates that you might want to proceed? So I'll turn it back to you. If there's anything that you've got questions on that you would like some insight or perspectives on from me to address before you get into your conversations.
Anything? Nothing at all? All right.
Well, that's good news. Okay, hopefully, we've done our job then as well. Either that or we've worn you out, one of the two, I'm not sure, maybe both. So a number of you have asked about how this process works. And there's no one single way. Every community does this a little differently, but I'm going to give you the advice of what I typically do in some of the other communities, and it seems to work pretty comfortably. Now that you've met these candidates and evaluated them, I normally ask if each one of you, if there is a one or two candidates that, out of everything that you've said, that you're interested in at least having a conversation with your colleagues about potentially being your next city manager. If you only have one, that's okay. If you've got two, that's okay as well. But it gets us down to typically a smaller number of folks. And then, once we kind of know where you all collectively, individually, and then collectively are, what I normally encourage you to do is just assuming there's more than one, if there's just one, you know, that's a pretty easy decision. But if there's more than one that comes out of that conversation, I normally ask you to just say, okay, a number of you picked candidate A. Let's talk about candidate A. Tell me what you liked and allow you to convey to your colleagues your thoughts. You've not had a chance to do that until today, as well as people that might not necessarily support that candidate about concerns that they may have. So that's a conversation to have. And we just go work down. If that's one candidate or two candidates or three candidates, whatever that shakes out to be. And then after that, after you've kind of explored that and you've heard each other, normally, we toss it back to you to say, all right, you've all thought about it, this is decision time. Is there a candidate that someone would like to make a motion to support? And then we kind of work our way through whatever that process of voting shakes out to be. So, makes sense? Are we comfortable with that approach?
You included in the stuff that you handed out to us a forced ranking form. Are we not going to be using that?
You're welcome to do that. What I have found, I've mentioned to a couple of you during some of the breaks, that you probably have in your own mind who your top one, two, three, or four are at this stage. What I'm suggesting is you can use that. If you've got a top one or two, maybe you offer the two. If you don't have a number two in the suggestion I've just said, just give us your top choice. But normally, I like to offer at least a couple. That way, everybody isn't kind of focused on, this is my only candidate that I'm going to proceed with. We may get to that point, but I often find commissioners that like to at least have a conversation about a couple of folks, but we'll wait to see. So, in a long-winded answer, Commissioner, I guess, if you've already used the forum ranking?
I have not.
You have not, okay.
But I thought each one of us were going to use it, not me personally.
Understood.
I have my ranking up here.
Then that's kind of where, and as I say, the only reason I hate to just use that solely is because, obviously, that's yours, but you haven't had the benefit of hearing your colleagues about insights they've got. And so if we take the top two candidates that you're least interested in pursuing, that gives you that opportunity to have those conversations.
Okay.
Makes sense? Everybody comfortable with that approach?
I'm comfortable with that. Commissioner Toth, that's good.
At what point in time do we get the feedback from staff?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. I emailed you last night, but I forgot we didn't. Jessica, do you have, can you make a copy of that document for the Commissioner? I apologize, we got caught up on changing questions. We did, I sent last night an email to you all with just kind of a high-level summary. Thank you for reminding me, Mr. Minney, my apologies, we had that together. Unless one of you have a hard copy of that, I don't know, if you do, you're welcome to share that at that point, yeah.
I just noticed the email. Can we have just a couple minutes then to review that, please?
Absolutely, this is an important decision. You take what time you need.
Copies of that.
Yeah, we'll get your copy.
I saw the one, but it was on my phone.
Just so you all are aware, those two siren vehicles that just took off down Gulf Boulevard are responding to a water rescue at John's Pass, along with our boat.
Okay.
The mayor has a copy.
Our side or on the Madeira Beach side?
I don't, that I don't know.
Madeira, okay. Thank you.
Real-time information going on here.
There's some wicked currents through there.
You should also have that in your email if anyone has their iPad and wants to.
Yeah, no, I saw the email, it'd just be easier to see on paper.
Sure.
You did? I didn't see it, but I did print it out. And it's probably easier to use.
Do we need to actually recess for maybe five minutes?
Five minutes, yeah. Once we get that document, yes.
Okay. We'll recess briefly so that the commission has an opportunity to review the staff's feedback. Is that something that we want to have a report given on or just through the report, just through the, like, do you want to, does anyone want to speak on that or just leave it at the written communication?
Speak on what?
On the staff's.
Oh, I'm happy to speak on it if that would help, but you're, it's up to you.
Okay. Anyone have a preference here?
How about if we read it and then if we have questions?
Okay. All right, we will recess for about five minutes. All right, welcome back. Thank you for that short recess to give the commission a quick chance to review something. So does that, does anyone have any other questions before we go into kind of providing our top one or two picks?
No, these were helpful. I'm glad we took the time to read them.
All right, perfect. All right.
Okay. Well, then, it sounds like there's consensus on at least asking each of you if you have a top one or two candidates that you would like to at least discuss or advance for discussion. I'll defer to you, Mayor, as to how you want to solicit that feedback from your colleagues there.
Sure. I don't want to put anyone on the spot and go in a specific order, so if someone wants to volunteer first, go for it.
Chuck Anderson.
Mr. Anderson.
James Slaton and Chuck Anderson.
It's okay. Chuck Anderson.
All right, and mine are Chuck Anderson and Ted Yates.
Okay. Okay. So clearly, we're going to spend some time on Chuck, since all of you at least identified him as either one or two. So I'm going to defer back to the commission and you, Mayor, as to how you would like to proceed. You have, obviously, one of you have James and one of you have Ted as one of the other candidates, obviously. Do you want to spend some time on those? Because there was only one of you for each one of those candidates, or how would you like to discuss that?
I think maybe we just, we take that as it is and give everyone an opportunity to say something if they would like to say something about their selections that they made.
Okay.
Or the ones that they suggested. For those of us who made two, we can speak on both. I don't want to put anyone on the spot to.
Sure.
Who didn't put them to say anything negative unless they'd like to. So we'll just, we'll go with that if everyone's good.
Okay.
All right. Anyone want to start?
I'll start, since you got the initial discussion there. I felt Chuck Anderson, coming into this, I was, I had put high on my list of boxes that needed to be checked, having Florida experience and having city manager experience. So I came into this experience thinking Chuck was at the bottom and through the process, through the many steps, he kind of moved up each time a little bit. I think, and I say this with all sincerity, I think any four, all, any four of those candidates would be a good city manager here in Treasure Island. And I was not going to get drawn in any kind of debate over which one was worse or better because any four of these gentlemen would serve the city of Treasure Island very well. But Chuck Anderson did surface, in my opinion, for a lot of reasons. Again, at each step, he had, I don't think anybody did more homework, although a lot of them did a lot of homework, but in terms of studying Treasure Island, seeing what was going on here, trying to get an understanding from here. But in his whole, I think he had said somewhere in his cover letter, hey, I'm moving to Florida. Whether I get this job or not, I'm coming here. You know, this isn't, you know, I don't want, I'm not getting out of Montana, I'm not seeking this job so I can get out of Montana. I'm moving to central Florida or the Tampa-St. Pete area, whether or not I get this job. And so that, you know, that weighed heavily in my thought process. The staff seemed to be comfortable with him as well. And he seemed like, you know, there is a learning process. And one of the things I had asked one of the other candidates who had recently gone through a lot of learning processes from going to another state here, you know, he said, it's, you know, it's not easy, it's tough, but, you know, it can be done. And he did it, he felt he did it, and still had more to learn. But I felt he had enough leadership skills, experience, ideas, the personality, the management style to overcome those shortcomings.
Okay. Anyone else?
Ditto. Just to embellish on that a little bit, I thought he was head and shoulders above the other candidates, especially in the presentations today, that he did a much better job. He was the only one, well, I'll say, took notes of this. At the one-on-ones yesterday, he was the only one that I interviewed who took notes and was prepared to answer them. That, to me, exhibited a good degree of organization, of making sure that whatever was discussed was memorialized to a degree. And that, as Arden said, Commissioner Dick.
Commissioner Dickey.
This guy. He's moving here anyhow. And that's a big factor, that he's committed to Florida. And that takes a lot of the, I think, the burden off of himself and off the commission in terms of transitioning here.
All right.
Can I add one more thing? I'd be very interested in the comments on Yates and Slaton.
Sure.
I'd just like to add to what you, my colleagues have said, and I do appreciate his high understanding of our organization and respect for our team members. And also, I really thought his first-year game plan strategy was very well thought out and outlined. And I also have a lot of respect for him for taking notes.
That?
That's it.
All right.
All right, I'll just cover Chuck Anderson first. I was very impressed with him, both days. And here's kind of my thinking when I went into it. I would like to see somebody that actually has city manager experience, being that top guy is a little bit different than being, you know, the assistant city manager, deputy city manager. He is not CM certified with ICMA. He does, he's in the organization, but he's not certified as city manager. He is not from Florida. And that was one of the things I was kind of hoping for, that we'd get somebody from Florida. And a lot of it has to do with weather, you know, the hurricanes and the emergency management. And here, we're right on the beach, the island and everything else. And the other thing then about not being from Florida is that he doesn't have the sunshine laws that he's got to deal with and everything else that Florida does differently than most every other state. So those are the four things. But I was very impressed. He's a very good storyteller. And I don't mean that in a negative way at all. I mean, the best, some of the best people that are out there can tell somebody what's going on in a story format and be one of the best communicators that there is. And I did feel as though he was that way. So then, turning to James Slaton, it's basically just all the opposite of what I did have. He is a certified city manager. He is a city manager and has been doing that job for four years. He's been in Florida in the governmental role over at Lake Wales for going on 20 years. So he clearly understands everything about what hurricanes are and the emergency management and all of the laws that we have differently. So that's the two, the difference between the two. One has experience, one is certified, one does understand everything, and the other one is going to be a fresh start. But it's going to be, you know, I'm hoping still he can hit the ground running, even though he doesn't have those other items. So that's what I have.
All right. For me, likewise, the Florida experience really was really high on my list originally. But hearing from Chuck Anderson, I felt very confident that he would be able to learn and adapt very quickly. We've had city managers in the past that have moved from out of state. Actually, Chuck Coward had a very similar path to Mr. Anderson. He was, served in Colorado and some other similar areas. So Chuck did really well here. And I think also that his military background, some of those Florida concerns that we have are all very like compliance-based, our sunshine law, our public records laws. He's not one that's going to try to get around those rules. I mean, those are, that's my top concern in someone coming from out of state, is that they would not understand the sunshine law and try to do something they're not supposed to, like conveying messages between us. I know that there's a lot of, there's some city managers out there, even in Florida, who are very liberal and lax with that, but our city management has always taken a very stern approach to that. They are above approach. And I didn't get that vibe from all of the candidates, but I know for a fact that Chuck would be very able to learn that quickly and comply with those issues. I think we have a really great team that can back him up when it comes to emergency management. I think his military experience there is also going to be, or would be invaluable. So I'm not really concerned with that. We have great systems in place already. We've been through it recently. And I'm confident that he will be able to lean on his staff to do that. So he really impressed me. As everyone knows, I commented on the military experience kind of being a negative for me at one of our former meetings, but he really, in-person interviews, one-on-one and as a group, really changed my mind. I think that his, and as I've also mentioned in the past, I really know DISC very well. And I was really, I think that his personality type really fits and complements what we're looking for. We need somebody who is a little bit dominant and a little bit influential. And he is in that D and I space kind of right in the middle. So he can take charge, but he can also be influential with our staff. I loved his responses to inclusion of our staff and really building on the team that we have here. So for all those reasons, that's why he was one of my top choices. And I also appreciated his answers about development and his kind of boots-on-the-ground experiences doing that. Some of the conversations I had with him one-on-one, I felt as though he really kind of put his, he walked the walk. And he gave me examples of talking to people and making those relationships to actually move the needle. So that wasn't something I heard from everyone. Yates, I really like his personality. I think that he does have a little bit of Florida experience, but I was really impressed with his presentation today. I think he's very gregarious. I think he hit a lot of the key things that I'm looking for in his presentation. I think he was also very complimentary of our staff, and it was clear that he knew that they know what they're doing and wouldn't be coming in here and trying to make big changes or kind of disrespect. He would be very inclusive. I think those two were the top for me that I would trust to come in here and be able to lead our team in a good manner. Slaton, you asked, I'm going to also speak on Slaton because he was towards the top of my list, but I think what he's done in Lake Wales is really impressive. And I've been over there myself to see it. But I just, I, and with that Florida experience being important to me, he was kind of the top in that category. But some of his answers today were just a little too short, and I gave him a chance to kind of, I probed and asked questions to try to get some answers and elaboration out of him, and I didn't get that. So absent that, he would have been on my top list as well.
Appreciate that, and I know your candidates appreciate that. I'm sure they're watching, or they'll ask for a debrief with me afterwards as well. I could comment on a couple of things to identify. One, and I can say this with some level of experience from when I came to Florida in 2003, I came from Michigan. I've been through a lot of natural disasters, and I joke with our mayor, I said, never been through a hurricane, so what's that all about? And he confidently said, we never get them here, they're always down in South Florida. That, in 2004, we had four, or three hurricanes all went through the Polk County. First time, three, one county had three hurricanes, and we run a municipal electric utility. So it was an interesting first year. What I will tell you, I think I mentioned this earlier, is that managers have a kind of a set of training and toolbox that they work from. And we rely upon those skill sets to be able to react to something we may not have encountered in the past. And so no doubt, in the case of Chuck, he's been through disasters and weather and flooding and storms and, you know, just given the location he's at. So the good news is, you run a team here, and you've got people that are well-skilled and schooled in how your EOC operates in the process, because whoever comes in is likely coming in right at the, you know, now we're into storm season. But sometimes in this position, it's trial by fire. And as long as you have a good team around you and you've got some good basic instincts, you can pick that skill up. So I would tell you from somebody that went through that process and never having hurricanes, I relied on a lot of my insights from previous storms and activities that I'd worked in in other parts of the country. The other piece, I would say, is that Florida is different, we all know that. We, the sunshine law got discussed a lot today. One of the things that I know I did when I came in as a non-state candidate is, the league has regular training sessions for elected officials about procedure, and Open Meetings Act, and Public Records Act and all that. I signed up for that and within the first 30 days, went to one of those sessions to kind of learn that. And a lot of other city managers that come from outside the state go through that. So there are ways that managers can get that training relatively quickly. But I'm also going to say, the manager is.
Have that online now, too, on demand.
Exactly. So I'm not saying that experience doesn't matter because you've seen one public record request, you've seen one public record request, you've got to deal with it. But in a similar vein, you've got legal counsel, you've got staff, you've got ability to kind of work through that. It's unlikely, and I certainly didn't get that sense from Chuck, that he would be a Lone Ranger and just kind of forging ahead without consulting with the appropriate people if he wasn't comfortable in terms of the responses of how you operate and proceed. He spoke a lot during his discussion yesterday with staff, and I think he spoke about it again today, about high ethics and his moral compass. So I think one of you had said, Mayor, I think you said, I don't think this is a manager that's going to try to work around that. I certainly didn't see anything in his response that would give me concern that that would be a problem there.
Right.
And the other piece that, two other pieces I would identify. One, I went back to look at your position profile brochure, and you did talk about ICMA member and credentialed manager as being preferred, not required, but being preferred. And I just throw this out as something that if ultimately you land on this discussion, it's certainly something that would be discussed with a candidate. I've had some of my searches where that's a priority of the commission. And that's certainly something you could build into a discussion to say, you can't get there overnight, but there's a process, but there's maybe an incentive that if you become a credentialed manager through ICMA, maybe there's a bonus in pay or bump or something of that nature. You can build some incentive into that process if you wanted to go through it. Commissioner Drucker had asked me today about that effort, so just for the benefit of the rest of you. It starts with a self-assessment, doing an analysis of your skill sets, and that involves typically a 360 review. From there, it identifies those areas where you're really strong now and what areas might be helpful for you to enhance your skill set to become a more well-rounded manager. You develop a plan of action of what you're going to do in terms of training and skills and programs and seminars and things of that nature. It goes through a peer review process. Then you get accepted into the program. You're not a CM right off the bat, a credentialed manager, but that gives you the chance to start that process. When you complete that and you've done through that initial kind of work plan, then it gets a peer reviewed again. And assuming you've met the credentials, then they offer the CM credential, and that's done a couple of times in the course of a year. After you become a credentialed manager, it requires at a minimum, every year, you account for all the training and programs you've done, so there's an ongoing process. And then there is a minimum 40-hour CEU or training-type program in order to retain your credential status. So a number of my communities, some say that's a requirement, others say we'd like you to get it, and we've been able to work some language into agreements that parties have gone to. So I just, I offer that if that's something that you want to proceed with. He is a member of ICMA, so I'm sure he's familiar with that. But that's something that could be advanced as well. And then the other piece, I just wanted to highlight, and Mayor, you mentioned this as well, with regards to Chuck's DISC assessment. Not quite in the center, but pretty close to the center of the four scales that DISC evaluates. And what that tells you is although he's leaning on the stronger the D and the I, if you read through the material, the closer you are to the outside of the circle, the more predominant that style is. And I think, as I was watching your candidates, I think they all reflected what I saw in the DISC assessments on them as well. So I think they were a fair representation. So clearly, on the upper end of dominance and influence, to be able to take that leadership role, but not so much that there's blind spots on the other ends of the scale, on the conscientious and on the steadiness as well. So it really represents a pretty balanced style to be able to deal with whatever. I have no idea, we haven't done an assessment of all your senior staff or all of you as elected officials, but obviously, the closer you are to the center of that circle, the more comfortable you are to be able to adapt and be able to relate to other people as well. So a little bit of tendency, as you said, on leadership and the dominance and influence side, but pretty comfortable that you're going to cover those bases and not a lot of blind spots there. So those are the only other pieces I would add to your conversations today.
All right. Would this be an appropriate time to take some public comment? Sure.
One thing before that, do we, we've given you our choices. Do we get a choice from staff?
I'm your consultant, I'm not the one to pick that one. My job's to help set the table here, but I think you have four good candidates at this point, they're all qualified. At this stage of the game, you're in a position of saying, I call it shades of gray, which one fits the best of what you individually and collectively are looking for, what your staff is looking for, and what you think your community is looking for. Hopefully, we've given you four candidates that meet that criteria, and now you've got the tough decision to figure out which one you think is the absolute best. So I'm certainly comfortable. I would tell you, if you were making a choice that was uncomfortable with, I'd give you a red flag on that, but if you're.
I'm asking about staff.
Oh, I'm sorry, not me. I misread that, Commissioner, my bad on that one. I misread that, Commissioner, my bad on that one.
Do we get staff's input?
So here's my take, I will defer to Gary. Gary and I had a quick conversation about this. Staff is an important element. They're going to spend more time with staff than they will with you and so that's why we've incorporated them into the discussion as well. But I also say, I never ask staff to rank a candidate because at the end of the day, you have to do that.
I understand.
Now, do I have a sense of where they're at? Probably, but I don't think it's, I don't want to put staff in a position because if they want to say something that you might be in a different position, that's really not their role. I encourage them, if they felt strongly, to reach out and talk to any of you. I suspect that happened last night. You've gotten some feedback in that area. I'm going to put my old city manager hat on, I hate to put staff in a position where they're, they're really on the spot because I just think it's better off that at the end of the day, you, that's your call, not theirs, but you do have their feedback if that helps you.
Well, they're going to be working for the new city manager, so I agree to keep things where that is.
What I will tell you, and certainly you've seen the reactions on, if there was a disconnect there, I would tell you, I don't think, at least with regards to your, the lead candidate that we've been spending most of the time talking about, I don't think there's a disconnect there. I think that there's probably a good marriage to be had there.
Thank you.
Is that a fair way of saying it?
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect. All right. Let's have some public comment before we deliberate further or entertain a motion. So if anybody would like to come up, feel free to.
Appreciate the opportunity, but it seems to be a moot point at this time, so I don't want to hold it up.
I can always be swayed. All right. Any further discussion before we make a motion? All right, does someone want to make a motion?
I would.
Doesn't. Okay.
I move that we offer the position of city manager to Charles Anderson.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Comments? All right, roll call please.
Commissioner Manning.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations to Chuck Anderson. We all look forward to working with you.
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah, go ahead and give your applause. I did also want to just thank the other candidates. As the other commissioners have said, I was thoroughly impressed with all of them. I think as the others have said, any of them would have made a wonderful city manager and I hope that they each find a home that they're happy with. We have all 411 great cities in the state, so I really do wish them the best and I think that they will be able to bring some tremendous value wherever they land.
Excellent, thank you, appreciate that.
Yes, and thank you Doug. You've been fantastic. I know that the staff has enjoyed working with you. I, as, before we selected you, I had the opportunity to work with you through the Florida League of Cities, so I would, had full confidence that you were going to deliver and you have delivered above and beyond, so.
Thank you.
You've made this process very easy for us and I think that the staff would agree to that. We've had plenty of material, so I know that, I forget who said it last night, but someone approached me and said, like compared to other interview processes that they had gone through or witnessed go through, like ours has been the smoothest and the most thorough that they've experienced, so thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you. And I would, I would also comment, your staff's been great to work with, Jessica in particular, she's been my primary point person, but Gary's provided access to all your staff and the tours and the programs and believe it makes my job a lot easier if there's boots on the ground that have everything, everything. You saw the moving parts yesterday, there's a lot of things that could get tripped up. It all went flawlessly. We were pretty much on schedule on that process and so we appreciate that. We do, you will get, receive a survey from us. We always are looking at continuous improvements, what worked, what didn't work, what we can tweak. We also survey our finalists so they get a chance to react to that as well. So we appreciate that and certainly appreciate the support. And I know Tyler, you know, we, we share, my neighbor is a friend of yours who went through your Leadership Florida program, so I know she's going to be anxious to find out how everything went there as well, so I appreciate the comments and support, otherwise she'd be beating me up as well. One other just piece of solution, I guess, or direction we need. So the next stage of the game, now you've landed on a candidate, typically what I do is ask if the commission is comfortable to designate a representative of the commission to work with myself, typically your attorney and normally your HR director. I try to work off what I call terms and condition sheet, kind of high level, just talk about salary, benefits, start dates, you know, retirement benefits, all those sort of things that come into play, relocation factors and things of that nature. What I try to do is if I can have a representative that can help work with me and your team to at least put together an initial terms and condition sheet, we'll fill in those blanks. We typically work through that process with some back and forth between the uniqueness of whatever the candidate is looking for and whatever the city is ultimately going to be comfortable. Once we've reached conceptual agreement on those terms and conditions, normally turn it back over to have your attorney formalize it into the formal employment agreement. I know you've had one in the past, we have a gazillion templates we've used here in Florida and elsewhere, so we can normally work through whatever those issues are, so you don't have to necessarily craft, you know, start from the start, start drafting something cold. But I don't know what those all look like until we knew who the candidate is and what the dynamics are. And so if you're comfortable, I would encourage you to perhaps just designate either the mayor or a member of the commission that can work with us, because there'll be some back and forth and it's a lot easier to do that with one person than trying to convene this with five of you in one spot. You will ultimately see a formal agreement that will come back to you, that will have all those things finalized, but it's just in this process for logistic purposes, it's quicker if we can have one representative.
I move the mayor be the representative in that negotiation process.
Second.
All right, thank you guys, I'd be happy to. Do we need to vote on that?
I think it's clear, you have consensus, but sure, you did a motion and a second.
All right, roll call.
I think that was Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Toth.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Commissioner Manning.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Was that a reluctant I?
Do we need to, is there anything we need to discuss ahead of time? Some parameters that anyone is very passionate about? I know that residency has been something we've discussed in the past with other city managers. Salary, they've designated their range.
So here's, the one that I think might be worthy of some conversation today, you've given, all the candidates have given you kind of a sense of where their salary expectations are. Now, it's obviously all negotiable, but I think the one question, and I identified to a number of you when we first came, first met with you, there was a desire for residency on the island if at all possible, but I also know there's a charter provision that allows you to waive that. So, but I did mention at that point, I was a little concerned relative to your salary level versus what the cost of housing is and/or the availability of housing here. So if residency is desired, that may be a point where we need to have some conversations about how that can be done. I've worked with communities where they've actually provided housing, I've worked with communities where the cost of housing is so much more expensive than what the salary could afford that they've done housing allowances. I've also seen deals where people have put resources to the table as a down payment and the cities contributed to that and then whenever the house is sold, they prorate a share. So there's all sorts of ways to address that in high-cost housing locations, but I guess the question ultimately becomes, you know, if that's a component, I'm just telling you that's likely to be something we're going to have to spend some time talking about. So if there's a flexibility on that, or if you want to just wait and see till we start that conversation, but it might be helpful to at least get a sense of temperature about how important residency is, recognizing we're likely to have to do something creative given your cost of housing here.
Sure. Any thoughts?
I asked each candidate about residency and they all were very amicable to living in our city and being part of our community. And I feel that's very desirable trait and that was one of my priority questions, because I got asked that a lot from my constituents that really wanted to see our city manager living in our community.
I think that as we make the offer, that if we get pushback, then I would say that would be the time for us to deal with it. Okay.
Agreed.
Yes. Sounds good.
Okay, gotcha.
It would be my preference for sure.
Gotcha, and I have no idea where he's at and with the housing market, the cost of housing up there versus here, but we'll, we'll at least advance it in that front and we'll, we'll cross the bridge and figure out what we might have to do to make that work, so.
Sounds good.
Good.
All right. From here, what is the timeline? Do we know what his availability is? I know he asked a question specifically about that. Do you know his kind of circumstances and?
I'm going to go back to look at his material and I know he asked, and I think, as I recall, I think he assumed in August 1 on the first-year game plan, that was my recollection of my notes from that, so I assume we're, normally we're in a, you know, I say 60-day window for some of those currently employed to make that type of transition, but it all depends. We're in the summer now, I think he mentioned he has a child that's in school, in high school, but they're out of school at this point, so sometimes that's a factor, they got to wait for kids to get out of school. He's already made a commitment, he's going to be relocating to Florida, so part of that's already been in place. So my suggestion is we try to get, we try to get you to the finish line as quickly as we can, we try to get the candidate in office as quickly as we can, but until we really start that conversation, it's hard to say, you know, what that might look like. But I would assume most of the time between 60 to 90 days is kind of what we typically see for somebody to physically start the job.
Okay.
And then what I would do is I'd be working obviously with you and your attorney and your HR folks to get the terms together, we'll share a document, make sure we've got all that stuff in place and we'll just get on a quick call to talk through and fill in some of those blanks for the initial offer.
Okay, sounds good.
Makes sense.
Yep. Any other questions? All right.
Right, you guys have been great, congratulations. Glad to represent you on this one and I look forward to getting you all the way across the line.
Thank you. And one final thank you, our staff. You guys have put in an incredible amount of hours and work. Hopefully you can tell that it was extremely important to all of us up here to find somebody that will come in and work with you all well, so we believe in you guys and we're very thankful for everything that you do for the city. All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, congratulations.